No, get on camera. Get on camera, Chief.
Hi, guys.
Hey, Sean.
It's gonna be a little different for me today, guys.
I like that shirt.
Yeah.
I like that background, Sean.
I do, too. Are you in the little girl's room?
I am.
I couldn't tell.
He got his hair cut.
Sean, you look handsome.
You got your haircut. I like it.
I needed it. I feel like a new man.
Politics.
All set. The Chair will call the June 2nd, 2020 meeting of the City Council order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
Of America.
And to the Republic which stands
Which stands
One nation
Under God
Indivisible
Indivisible
With liberty
With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, could you please call the roll? Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderwoman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
He's here.
Okay. Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderwoman DeCenso.
Present.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Langfelder.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, a quorum is present. Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the May 26, 2020 City Council meeting and approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances into the record of this City Council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda in the record of this City Council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, you're gonna introduce a amendment?
Yeah. Uh, yeah, that's coming up. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt proposed amendment number one for the consent agenda regarding ordinance 2020-114 with regards to, I think, the term from one year to two year.
I think it's 2-1-4, Mayor.
2-1-4, Mayor. Okay, two to one. If you'd want to go ahead, Corporation Council, and give an overview, please.
Thank you. This is to address 2020-114, and there is a technical amendment inadvertently, yet the ordinance refers to one year instead of two year, and the agreement actually was for two year. So this simply adjusts the dates to reflect a two-year term instead of a one-year term. This is a KOA lease, you know, normal lease that we do every two or three years on behalf of the utility.
I'll make a motion to accept amendment.
Second.
Motion to accept. Been moved in second. Any discussion on the amendment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any discussions on the ordinance as amendment? So, all those in favor, the ordinance as amended, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The clerk will call the roll.
And this is for the entire consent agenda?
Oh, not just this particular item?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
So this is for the entire consent agenda?
With that amendment.
With the amendment.
Yes, sir, sorry.
Alderman Redpath.
Yep.
Alderman Gregory. Hold on. He's on mute. Oh, that was... Thank you. Alderwoman Turner.
Yes.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Aye.
Alderman Proctor.
Aye.
Alderwoman DeCenso.
Aye.
Alderman McMiniman.
Aye.
Alderwoman Conley.
Aye.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Ten ayes and no nays, Mayor. Thank you. Agenda number 2017-103, 2018-110, 2019-008, 2019-276, 2019-430, 2020-049, 2020-067, 2020-134, 2020-152, 2020-153, 2020-158, 2020-159, 2020-160, 2020-161, 2020-162, 2020-163, 2020-164, 2020-165, 2020-166, 2020-167, 2020-181, 2020-195, and 2020-207 remain tabled during committee. Is there any action on any of those? Chair will entertain a motion to add agenda number 2020-228, an ordinance annexing certain described real property located at Panther Creek Drive to the first reading of ordinances into the record of this City Council meeting.
So moved.
Second, McMiniman.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Mayor, real quick.
Yes, Alderman Hanauer.
That was regarding the reserve, correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Right.
Okay, and is there a second ordinance along with that?
I believe the other ordinance was already on. This, it was just inadvertently, it got filed, but there was just an inadvertent omission, and this is just to take care of that. All of the other ordinances should be on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Gregory? Alderman Gregory?
Uh, yes, um, since we're here on this process here, can we, is there a process to add, to maybe send those who become a part of the city, just some basic city information, such as, you know, who their alderman is and things of that nature? I think that would be good, because everybody doesn't know, believe it or not, you know, and they get a little confused on who to contact or things, so, you know, I think that would help those who join us and welcome them into the city.
Yeah, that's a good idea. I don't think anything goes out necessarily in a packet format, so as they come into the city, you're saying just a kind of a
Just a little, you know, just in a
Relationship piece that says who the alderman is and the, or alderperson is in the area and city treasurer and others, and what services, who to call.
Absolutely. I mean, you know, because, you know, a guy, he put it to me, you know, quite simply, said, "Man, you take me, make me come in the city, raise my taxes, and don't even come shake my hand." So I went and shook his hand, and on behalf of the city, and that's a recommendation that helped from him that I forward on to you, sir.
Yeah, we'll do that. Thank you very much. Any other questions on that? Is there any unfinished business come before the council?
Yes.
Alderman Redpath?
Yes, Mayor, we, Alderman and Turner and I discussed with the Utility Director, we need to have a utility meeting, and we're going to schedule that for June 15th. They have some issues that we need to discuss. I'm asking the clerk to move the meeting over to the Lincoln Library, so we can set up social distancing, and that way, we will only have the City Council and staff. Any citizens want to address the committee, we'll have to do that via Zoom, so we're gonna probably have to have Tom Chee help us with that. So, Mr. Clerk, if you can start working on that for
Will do.
June 15th.
Yeah, we'll have to see if the, I don't sure if the library's actually set up, so it might be a financial outlay to make that happen, but we'll check into it.
Yeah.
What time were you looking at doing it?
Uh, June 15th at 5:30.
5:30, thank you. Actually, we could, we could do it in here, if it's just a meeting in the council, and council members could be in the audience or in the area, but we can talk about that. We'll check the logistics, but I think the library's not set up for, like we are here.
That's where the city government started.
Yeah.
1987.
But that's before, that's before we had live streaming and all the good things we have right now that we've moved forward towards, so it's a brave new world. I'm happy to get it set up, but there could be a cost outlay to do so.
And Mayor, just so you know, I don't want any alderpersons to feel uncomfortable, and that's the only reason I suggested moving there, so we can have social distancing, so we can all be in the same room. It's not effective enough, this is tough enough with this Zoom we're doing now, but we need to discuss, there's some tough issues that we need to talk about, and Doug Brown suggested that we do have a meeting, so we're gonna, Alderman Turner and I decided to ask to have that set up.
Oh, without a doubt, but we should be doing it as the most public space available, so if we can broadcast it via livestream, if that cannot happen, then I would suggest to be here in the council chambers, and we had set it up the same way as we do now, and people can be social distanced, but we'll work through that as far as that goes.
Yeah.
But we'll see what the parameters are with setting up the library in livestream, because it could be beneficial as we go back to the recovery of COVID, then we can livestream other activities or other meetings that are in the library, so it'd probably be helpful in that regards.
Good. I'm not arguing with you, Mayor.
No, I'm not arguing either.
I'm just trying to make it, I'm trying to make it comfortable for everybody.
Sure. We appreciate it. But that's the thing, is, you know, being a public forum with regards to the utility, we need to make sure we make it as public as possible. So, we appreciate that. Any other unfinished business? Alderwoman DeCenso?
I'm probably going to say what Alderwoman Conley was just going to say, and the fact that our library director has told us that the large room we would use for that meeting is now currently filled. It's book storage. Is that correct?
Uh, I'm not sure. We'd have to check that out, but, you know, being two weeks, we can move the books if we need to and figure it out. So we'll, we'll look at the logistics, and we've asked all departments, just so the council members know, the public knows, you know, in this challenging time that we're living through, you know, with regards to the COVID virus, with regards to the civil unrest that we're experiencing, it's all about how do we better engage the public on an individualized basis, one-on-one relationships, and how we provide services from that aspect, and then from the aspects of groups, and as a community as a whole, all those different aspects, so people really understand that we're here to serve the public as best as possible. So I challenge all directors, actually today, actually prior to this, when the coronavirus hit, is we all went into isolation, how do you engage the public? Some departments had done it better than others, but it's a continuous challenge that we all have as a city government, how do we become better engaged with our public, to build the public's trust from an individualized basis, from a, from one person to one person, or if it's a group or a collective whole, that's what we aim to do within the city of Springfield, and, you know, all directors will help in that initiative, or should be, as well as all of us, so we appreciate everybody's support in that, and appreciate you let me know, because, you know, I wasn't aware if that was being used for storage, but if we need it for a public forum for the utility, we'll make it happen. Alderwoman Conley, did you have something, or? Is there any other unfinished business?
Mayor, real quick.
Alderman Hanauer?
I don't know if this is under new or whatever, but I wanted to congratulate the citizens of Springfield, and especially the people that have organized the, the two rallies downtown. They, it showed Springfield does it right, and they did it right, and our police force did it right, so we're, I feel like it shows that we're better than some of the other cities and some of the stuff that has gone on, so just wanted to mention that, and I appreciate everybody's support, and, you know, that it turned out very, very good, very peaceful, and that's, that's what we wanted, so.
Thank you. Any other unfinished business? Any new business? I do have one item. Alderman Gregory?
Uh, no, go ahead. I would just like to make sure we, we, we address a few things before we go.
Sure, go ahead.
Well, you know, I would defer to Alderwoman Turner, because I'm sure she would have some things to say.
Alderwoman Turner?
You're muted, Doris.
Muted, Doris. No, I said I saw Misty had her hand up. She can go ahead, and then I'll follow her.
Your pleasure.
Oh, thank you, Doris. I actually just wanted to congratulate Corporation Council's circle, as he is a new grandparent with his wife Carol, so I just wanted to give him a shout out and say congrats.
Oh, good job.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Turner?
Yeah, so, is there, you know, I hate to even have this conversation because, dialogue, because last time I had this conversation, I had to have added security at my house, so hopefully that won't happen again, and we can, we can talk about it without additional drama, but I really, there definitely has to be a concerted effort and a dialogue with everyone about the culture that exists in the city of Springfield. I know that people want to say, "Well, I, you know, you would not believe how many, you know, phone calls and text messages and those kinds of things that I, that I got, and Alderman Gregory got after this whole thing happened." And that's fine, and that's good, but, you know, I will just repeat what I said earlier. It takes everybody to stand up and say, "This is wrong. It's not gonna be tolerated, and we have to do better as a city." Because, you know, I will continue to say that silence, to me, denotes tolerance, and that you think that everything is, is okay, and it's, and it's not okay. We were, and thank you, Alderman Hanauer, for bringing up the two actions that the city had, because they really were a clear difference between what we saw down on the Capitol the last few Saturdays. There were 3,000 cars and probably 10,000 people that gathered downtown on Sunday, and it was very organized, very peaceful, and it was very multi-generational, it was very multicultural, and really depicted how people were feeling about what was going on in our nation at this point in time. And then on Monday, we had another action where there were 1,000 people that gathered on the Capitol steps, and, and I really think that everyone should take note of that, of that action, because it was organized by three teenagers. A student from Lamphier, I think two students from Lamphier, a student from Southeast. Three teenagers pulled that together, and it was very organized. It was, you know, there was no hate speech, there were no swastikas, there was no profanity, none of that, and again, it was very multicultural, very multi-generational. So, when we can have people come together like that to say, they, they understand that there needs to be a cultural change in this city, I don't, I think that it's really incumbent upon all of us as elected officials to stand up and say, "We understand and know that there needs to be a cultural change in the, in this city." And I, I hope that, you know, I hope that my fellow colleagues on, on the council will join Alderman Gregory and I when we, when we stand up, when we stand up and say that. I know that it's difficult. I know that it's uncomfortable. I know that people, you know, for some, it's difficult to get out of that comfort zone, but until we do that, nothing is ever, ever going to change. I, you know, I, when I see, you know, you have to understand that what we're seeing in this country now, and I'm not trying to make a speech, but I think you have to understand that what we're seeing in this country today is the uprising of a generational rage that has been, that people have been holding in, and you just can't continue to see these types of inequities, you know, continue to happen over and over and over again, until people feel that they have to speak out, because nobody is hearing, when people, when people die in the street for no reason other than they're African-American, and, and no one actually steps up and does anything, you can't expect people to continue to experience that and not feel some kind of outrage that's gonna bubble over. And, and I'm really trying to do a cautionary tale, because in the city of Springfield, and I love Springfield, I've lived in Springfield my whole life, I've raised, I've raised my family here, you know, my, my grandchildren are here, but I really would do a cautionary tale, because even though we don't have people dying in the street, we don't have, but we have problems. We have problems here. We have problems within our police department here, and it's not a stretch to say that some of the things that you are seeing on, on the media, on the news, some of those things are happening in our city, it just doesn't get played out in the media. There are so many things that happen in this city that don't get played out on the media, and I'm really afraid that if we don't stand up and take, take control and take some kind of action, the next activity is not gonna be as pleasant as the ones over, over the weekend. You know, the other thing that I was really disappointed in was the way that the media handled it. There was a lot of misinformation that was, that was put out by the mainstream media. There was a lot of fear mongering, there was a lot of, of anxiety that, that residents had that was so totally unnecessary. On Monday, my phone was ringing off the hook, people, and texting and emailing, "There's a, there's a big crowd at Lamphier High School. They bust all these people in. They're gonna leave there, and they're gonna march downtown, and they're gonna loot, and they're gonna do this and that." Well, it was the graduation. That's what was happening. It was graduation. And, and then, you know, you had the whole thing about dicks, you know, there was all this looting and, and everything, and it, and, and, you know, we found out that that was incorrect, and Channel 20 actually would not correct that until the mayor asked them to. So, you know, and then people have all this, all this anxiety, because, and then when you see what happens with that, is then when you see three young men walking down the street, going home, then that becomes a threat. People perceive that as a threat, and it turns ugly very quickly. So, we, you know, we have to do better, and I'm just asking my fellow council members to join Alderman Gregory in that clarion call, to say, "We, we have to do better, and we're going to do better, and we're gonna do better together."
Amen. Alderman Gregory?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, it's been a, been a rough weekend, man, you know, since that, that little incident happened, I, I, you know, life has definitely changed a little bit, but, but, you know, for this city and for myself, it was a, it was a gift and a curse. It really, it really brought me back to just myself. Since I have been elected, I, you know, I've just been trying to fit in. I've been trying to speak well. I've been trying to, you know, you know, with my writing, I, I've just been trying to really, really, really prove to everybody that I'm worthy of the seat that I hold, not only from my community, but, but within City Hall. You know? You know, I walk around there, I've been walking around there, and, you know, I, I feel, you know, when, when somebody's uneasy with me, because I do look different. I look different. I'm different from, from, from any black man in any politi, that I know. I'm very, very different. And I know that, so I've been trying to, you know, do my best to, to fit in, but it, it just wasn't working. That's why I was always fumbling over my words, because I wasn't being myself, and I wasn't just talking, because I was worried about just, you know, how people, you know, already look at me and, you know... But this weekend showed me that just being myself and, 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 and just moving on and fighting for what's right is gonna be tough. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna have to say some things that are very frank, that are the truth, and everybody's not comfortable with that. History has taught us that men like me, women like Doris, who stand up for what's right, have significant problems. And you know me. We've had a relationship way before here. Many of the politicians that are in office to this day, Republican and Democrat, I've had a relationship with from the things that I've done in the community, and when I came in, I didn't try to let politics sway me either way. I wanted to learn people for who they are, not because of their political affiliations, as I don't know how to be a politician, because I'm not that. I just know how to be Sean Gregory. I just know how to try to learn who you are, just like I had to do when I was young, when I went from house to house to house. I had to learn people, and I had to love them very quickly, so that's who I am. So everybody on this council, that's who I am. I'm gonna work hard. I'm a little different. I'll talk a little funny. I might even spell something wrong, but that's who I am, but when, 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 when this weekend happened, our city showed, you know, that the black community, that we are, we are a little weary of them, just as I've been feeling walking around City Hall every day. We showed them that, because we got in riot gear. We blocked off City Hall. Instead of you, Chief, and everybody else who's part of this city, because we are all citizens, get on some shorts and get your butts out here with everybody else. That's what everybody else should have done, because what will change a life and change what this is all about is getting down on the hot pavement for eight minutes with nobody on you, with your hands behind your back, and see how that feels, with nothing or nobody on you, let alone four guys or whatever it is. That's the importance of what whoever wasn't there across this entire city missed. And because they wasn't there, their actions and their jobs or whatever around the city is gonna have to dictate whether they support the inequities or inequalities that are true in this country. We have to act as a city and, and, and as a community, and, and I'm so proud of our community, because we've shown that what we really are. We embody the spirit of Abe Lincoln here in Springfield this weekend, and we gonna be the, the light for the entire country, just like we were before when he freed the slaves, no matter what you feel why he did it. And right now, we have to stand up and be the shining light and save the country one more time. And it's gonna be tough, but I'm up to it, and I know we all up to it, and we're gonna get to rocking, and I love everybody, and I, I'm just passionate about us. And guess what? As you guys get to know me, now it's gonna make it, everything much more easier to deal with people in a community heart who are less than perfect, because we have to hear them in order to fix their problems. To know me is to know Black America. To know Ms. Doris is to know Black America, and if we listen, y'all got the head, y'all got the, 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 y'all got the hand up, because you got me, you got Doris. Not very many cities around this country got somebody like us that have walked and lived and still live it right now, to this day. I love y'all, man. Let's, let's, I don't, I don't wanna turn this into that and everything else that, that whatever. We're gonna deal with those things, and it's gonna, it is what it is, but we have to fix it, and we have to move on, because it did rear its ugly head. I didn't ask for this. If, 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 if somebody would have called me and asked me what I thought about the late night parties, I would have told them I disagree. I would have told them that I've been all up, public works, but, and everybody else who will listen to me about certain issues over there that can help this situation. They would have known that I'm working on a plan to try to extend ours, so the question was asked. Come out and da-da-da-da. I'm from that life. That's why I got here. I walked straight out of there and I, and into the City Council, so I know all about what's going on in my community. So, if they would also called, I, I would have talked with him like all the other officers that, 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 that talk with me and give me their, their ideas, and, you know, we, we talk back and forth, so, so it's never been a police thing. I actually have tried to be a police officer twice, once when I was younger, and once when I was a little older, 32, and I just ran out of time, because I would have kept trying, because I wanna be an active part of the solution. So let me address the situation with the Prairie Capitol Convention. So let me address the situation with the Prairie Capitol Convention Center, since there is some people who just want to get that out there. Yes, me and an officer did have a slight misunderstanding, but you know what I did? Rather than try to publicly humiliate this city or Springs or, or the police department, I went to that man and I told him, I cannot be a part of the active solution if I'm walking around harboring or, or allowing past emotion effect present times. And we had a great conversation and we walked away and we vowed never to speak of it again. And we did that, but for some reason, somebody wanted to push the envelope to try to embarrass me and try to get it all out there. Where it's out there, I've never hid anything from anybody. But I learned from that situation. Because I had to deal with another situation after that, but I never said any, a word. I took it as you got me back. I left it alone. This is what we go through where I come from all the time, actually, because not very many people will believe it's true, but it is. But I left it alone. You got me back. So I'm, you know, I, I just say to move on, I look forward to, to dealing with, with that certainly and everything else that we will have to deal with. But as far as our city and what we need to do, I'm fired up to do it and we're going to get it done. And, and, and I love everybody, no matter what conversations we have to have, we're going to have them and we're going to have some understandings and we're going to move on. It is what it is. We have to govern, we got a city to run, period.
Well, we appreciate you sharing that and we love you too. One thing is what makes you worthy is your voters. I mean, that's what anybody that's elected to office, you're worthy from that perspective. So it's important that you retain that voice in the public, especially for individuals that aren't comfortable in coming to city government. Uh, that's very concerning, you know, because we're here, like you said, the home of Abraham Lincoln, government of the people, by the people, for the people. That's what it's all about. Do we have our issues? No doubt about it. And really what concerns me is with regards to what's happening across the country, that is for everybody to do self-reflection. How can we improve as citizens, as individuals, you know, as groups we represent, as cities as a whole? But most importantly, we can't be set on, or become too complacent. It's important that we do that self-analysis each and every day. I think on the one meeting that we did have Friday, which was very appreciative, the one thing Pastor Dawson said was, what are the actionable steps we need to do to go forward? And that's what we really need to do on a regular basis to improve the East Side, improve all our inner city and for the lives of all individuals, especially black individuals. And I shared this, this morning on W M A Y. And again, what Alderwoman Turner said, uh, and if people haven't read it, they need to go and read the State Journal Register's article and not read the politicians, read what the organizers had said. And what I think the gentleman's name was Tyrese Thomas, 24 years of age. He said that, you know, we don't hate people. We, we want to work with everybody and I'm paraphrasing, but the one that struck me the most is when, uh, in this situation with the horrific death of George Floyd was that they feel that people hate them or in this case, police officer hates or doesn't understand. And that's what we really need to do is understand one another. And what struck it home to me is right after Ferguson, I was city treasurer at the time, N double A C P put on a, um, a forum to, uh, address the issues at hand, uh, try to discuss them as Alderman Gregory did. And I think you need to keep it real. You don't want to sugarcoat it. You don't want to become somebody that you're not. So it's important that you remain true to yourself because that's what got you to this point. But what Archie Davis, or Archie Lawrence had said, um, you know, and God rest his soul, he was the one that changed this form of government, one of the drivers that changed this form of government. And he said, for white people, when you're trying to teach a 15 year old or a 16 year old, your son or daughter how to drive, you don't have to worry about the things that the black people do. He said, for my nephew, I had to tell him, keep your hands on the wheel, keep your, if you're pulled over by the police, keep your hands on the wheel, your hands on the dashboard. Don't make any sudden movements. Don't put your hand in your pocket for fear of being potentially shot or, uh, arrested or whatever the case may be. And I think we all can agree. I think everybody can agree. And if anybody, and I, I, I think someone brought it up about the, uh, police chief in Chattanooga, Tennessee said that, well, if any officer thought that was okay, they should turn in the badge. You know what I say in the home of Abraham Lincoln? If anybody thought that that would not have happened, if they think that would have happened to a white person, they shouldn't be living in the home of Abraham Lincoln. Because that would not have happened to a white person. And that's a tragedy of all this. And how do we move forward? Together, we have to learn from the mistakes. Unfortunately, in this situation, and Alderman Gregory's right, we can be the light to show through the tough times. You know, we, we've had the great emancipator here. You fast forward, the first African American president, President Barack Obama, uh, at his legislators roots here, he, uh, made his announcement at the old state Capitol where Lincoln gave his House Divided speech. But the arc in all of that that connects it, the 1908 race riots which led to the formation of the N double A C P. And so no other city in the country or in the world has as much historical, um, information or shows the race tension in our country and how we've evolved from that. But it's important that we learn from our past and truly move to the future and make that cultural change. You know, that's incumbent upon each and every citizen of the city of Springfield. And I think, uh, you know, um, with people that called and said, oh, well, how'd you do it? It was our greatest asset, our people with regards to protests. Their voices were heard. And it's important that we continue to move forward in that process, but we have issues, we have to address those issues head on. We have to speak, as Alderman Gregory said, um, you know, with respect, speak with respect, but acknowledge the difficulties and the mistakes we make and learn from them and build on our strengths. So we appreciate you sharing that with us and especially, you know, you know, I don't, I haven't lived a life, you know, a black person's life. I just, uh, know from what's, I, you know, what's been shared and, uh, that's all we can do and how can we make it better so we can move forward in a positive manner? So I appreciate you sharing that as well, as well as Alderwoman Turner. Alderwoman Tonley?
Thank you, Mayor. And Alderwoman Turner, Alderman Gregory, I, I have been listening to you for a while and, and I, I think, Mayor, you know, you, you said we need to talk and, and, and not get, you know, have, have the hard conversations. I think one thing we need to also remember is that we need to listen and we need to acknowledge that there's always room to learn. Sean, I, I learn more from you every day and, you know, we, we talk and, um, that, that has meant the world to me, that I, I know I don't have all the answers. I, I don't have, I couldn't even, I can't even, you couldn't, you couldn't put me in even a white man's shoes, you know? But I've listened to all of you. I've, Alderman Hanauer, I mean, I come to you for advice. But Alderwoman Turner and, and Alderman Gregory, you bring something to this council that is invaluable. And for, for me, I, I just want to thank you for being patient because you have, I, Doris, I hear you say things like, I, I know I've said this before and I know I've heard you before, but we need to learn. We, we have an opportunity to open our ears and, and listen without judgment and I, I can tell you, it is difficult sometimes to hear, to hear, yeah, I, I've probably acted in, in a way that was bringing some preconceived notions to the table and I was wrong. I, I've done that, I know I have. I have, I don't always have answers, but the one thing I will promise both of you and everyone on this council and everyone in my ward is that I will have my ears open. I will listen with respect and if I'm wrong, I, I am open to being told. We've had some, we've had some tough conversations and we have tough ones ahead of us. But I also see a council of 10 people who, since it's been what, a little over a year now since I joined, have treated each other with respect and with dignity and, and an understanding that none of us has all the answers, but we do work together well. And, and Sean, you're going to kill me, making me, people in this council try to make me cry all the time, don't you? I'm sorry that you felt like you had to, you had to keep part of your voice down. I, I understand it. I, I feel like that too. I mean, I'm, I'm new to this also. But I, I hope moving forward that, that we can, we can listen with respect, we can talk with respect and we can learn more from each other. And, and I will be leaning on you a lot because we have a difficult road in front of us. And it's not a new road. This, this conversation has been had before. This conversation will continue to be held. But what I saw this weekend on Sunday with, and I just want to give a shout out to Sunshine Clements, who's a co, a coworker of mine, um, at D P H and she, you know, she organized a way for people to safely join in this time of, you know, we still have a coronavirus situation. We still have positive tests coming in every day at, at the state level and, you know, Sunshine put something together and worked with, with Black Lives Matter to give our community a chance to express our love and our desire to change. And I have to tell you, I was so deeply moved, um, watching the young, the young people and hearing the young voices speaking from the steps of our Capitol yesterday. I learned again, I, I, you can't hear these messages enough and I'm sorry you have to say them over and over, but we are listening and, and I, I want you to know, I hear this and I, I commit to you that, you know, I'm going to keep listening, we're going to keep talking and we're going to, we're going to pull together. Because this is a good city. This is our little corner of the world. Springfield, Illinois is a really good corner that needs to be improved. And I appreciate you coming and speaking from your heart. That's not easy to open yourself up like that. So thank you. And the rest of this council, I, you know, I, I have, I've, I just recently passed my one year anniversary of being seated. And, and to this council, I, I thank you for everyone's guidance, for your support and, and I hope that we can all, you know, work together for something that, that makes incremental progress because we, we can get there. There, there are good people in this community who want us to do it and we need to answer that, that request. So I could probably go on for a while, but I'm not going to. I just, um, again, thank you.
Alderwoman DiSenzio? Did you have your hand up? Oh, no. Okay.
Mayor, if I can?
Oh, Alderman Donlin.
Thank you, everyone. And, and I just, I just wanted to say a couple of things. I'm sure it's happened at everybody's, everybody's house that's on this call and maybe a lot of people that are listening, but we've had more and more difficult conversations around our kitchen table here at the Donlin household. And, you know, when your kids, when your kids ask you, how can these things keep happening again and again, and they start rattling off examples throughout the country? And I just, quite frankly, I'll just be very blunt about it. I look at them and I don't necessarily have the answers. I don't have the answers and I, and I don't like that. And it, it is, it is a, a fear that being an elected official, and I'm sure you all feel the same way of, you know, gosh, can it happen here? Is it going to happen here next? And, and how divisive and terrible that would be for our community and, and it's terrible elsewhere and it shouldn't happen anywhere and that's needless to say. But I tell you, you can learn a lot and Alderwoman Turner, you and I had a abbreviated conversation earlier today about this very thing. You can learn a lot from the youth of, 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 uh, our, our city. And I'm so proud of the individuals that organized the rally yesterday and, and I just hope that what was being said was, is actually heard. And, you know, we have 11 elected officials that vote on this call and on this council and, uh, people from diverse backgrounds and, uh, and, uh, you know, men, women. And, and I, I think if, and we have been, we've been presented with issues here locally, that we have the talent to work with others to keep this community together and, and work our way through problems, but we can't forget to listen to our kids and listen to the young, because they have a different perspective and quite frankly, a lot of times it's a better perspective. And that's all, man. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman DiSenzio?
I, I am in a way on this very briefly. My son and I did attend the procession on Sunday and because it was a, something where we could socially distance and wear our masks and everyone was being very careful, um, because there is still a pandemic. There were 1,600 plus new cases today and an additional 113 deaths. But I, I was the only other person on this, well, Mayor, you were there for a little while, but I was the only other person that took part in that procession. And I know other people had commitments and it was, you know, there was only a couple days' notice, but when it comes to issues of racial inequality or gender inequality in this community, this group needs to support each other, period. Because we have to work together and we have to have each other's backs. And what I saw Alderwoman Turner and Alderman Gregory go through last week crucified. I mean, scared to death. I talked to Sean, I talked to Doris, um, and I said, I made some very strong comments last week. No one bothered me at all. Not, I was quoted in the paper, no, no one bothered me, but Doris and Sean really got the brunt of it. And that just goes to show you where we are in this city and how far we have to go. So when you see 10,000 people, which I've never seen before in this city, rallying around someone dying at, at the hands of police officers for no reason, it, you know, you, you've got to evaluate where we are and where we need to be. And we're not where we need to be. That's all I'm going to say.
Thank you.
I think that is, you know, I think that is, I think it's important for people to understand that, I know I keep hearing people say, what if this happened in Springfield? Could this happen in Springfield? No one has died at the hands of the police in Springfield, but there have been so many situations where it's come this close. And we need to know that and we need to recognize that and we need to stop acting like those, acting like those things don't happen here. And, you know, we, it's, we can't have an open and honest conversation about those things in this community because every time we try to have that conversation, that the negative, instead of the, instead of the, the focus being on the problem and how do we work together to address the problem, the focus becomes on the people who are bringing the problem to light. So just like last week and the week before, you know, I mean, I said, you know, I, I said a pretty, what I thought was a pretty milquetoast comment about what I saw and what was reported to me about disparate treatment in the way that people were approaching the, uh, stay at home order. And my God, you, the, the, you know, those comments were, were taken and, and then it, and all of a sudden it became this huge deal that I was somehow crucifying every police officer in this city. It was just, it was just, you wouldn't believe how those comments became something that people took and, you know, just made me into an awful terrible person because I, because I spoke the truth. And until we can hear the truth and, and understand that it is the truth and not kill the messenger, but how do we work to address those issues and, and correct them? And I understand, you know, everybody has biases. We all do. Because we are a product of all of our environments and, and all of our life experiences and all of our life experiences are different and we're a product of all of that. But we have to learn how to But we have to learn how to understand and accept those biases and those, and, and what we have and what we carry with us. And how do we work on that and not project it out onto the, the larger community? And especially when you're in a position of, of trust and one where literally someone's life is in, is in your hands from a lot of, from a lot of different perspectives. So, you know, it's just, you know, I, I just think that we have to not put our head in the sand where this, where this issue is concerned. We have these problems. You know, I, I can, I know everybody, not everybody on, on, that's, that's on this Zoom meeting now, because like I said, we're all a product of our life experiences and our histories. But, you know, if you, if you think about it, you, you know that there are deep-seated, embedded issues in this community. And I feel like that is, I have a responsibility to, to not only address them and bring them to the forefront, but be part of the solution on how we have a plan of action to address them. And, 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 and I'm not, this is not new to me. You know, I've been doing this for years and it's, and it's upsetting. I think the reason why it's upsetting to me is because the same things that I'm saying here on June the 2nd, 2020, are the same things that I, that I said back in the 70s, in the, in the, in the 80s, in the 90s. So, you know, it's like, we have to stop regurgitating and, and, and talking about the, the problems and the issues is, is we have to be very deliberate and very serious about addressing them. And I think that we have a unique opportunity in our history, in this time, where, you know, it's not, it's not me calling, calling us to action to do that. I think if you look at what's happening throughout this entire nation, the nation is calling us to action to do something. Because if we don't, then we can find ourselves in a very dangerous situation. And, and please, don't anybody say that, that Doris is inciting violence or, or any of that, because that's not what I'm saying at all. That is not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is that at this point in our history, at this point in our country's history, we have to do better and we have to be better or we will suffer the consequences.
Any other questions or comments? Mayor? Oh, Alderman McMinim.
I'd like to extend appreciation to all those that put together the car convoy Saturday morning and the march yesterday, because it gave a positive outlet to what so many were thinking and feeling, a positive outlet. And we all love Springfield and we all found different ways to respond to both our local situation, our state situation, and our national situation. My wife's one of nine children, I'm one of 12 children, so, and they live in all parts of the country. So you spend a lot of time, you know, how's our son doing next to Humboldt Park in Chicago? How's my brother doing with all the bridges up in downtown Chicago and no CTA stops downtown? How's our daughter teaching high school over in Champaign? And so forth. I'm sure we're all communicating with those that we wish to reach out to, including our next-door neighbor of, of nine years, Steve Alexander. He and I spent an hour and 45 minutes, he and his wife Elizabeth, our primary sponsors, so to speak, of the African-American Museum. So, we've been neighbors for nine years. And there's so many good neighbors throughout the city that we talk with each other. And Steve and I talked for almost two hours on our patio Sunday night. And part of what we shared was, both he and I go back, he was born 70 years ago, I was born 67 years ago. We talked about what we remembered as, as teenagers. And those, those situations are so fresh on my mind still, still now. Because, you know, in Detroit in 1967, 40 dead, over 1,000 injuries, 7,000 arrests, 2,000 buildings destroyed. A year later, 1968, the spring, MLK. I'm saying this because you have to put things in perspective, because so many felt depressed and very upset last week by what was going on throughout our, our whole nation. And so, part of the benefit of knowing and studying history and thinking back about history is you can kind of put things in perspective. So in the spring of 1968, MLK murdered. In June, on my parents' 25th anniversary, Kennedy murdered Robert Kennedy. Vietnam is going on. We got a daily, a weekly death count. And some of us are thinking about that draft. And then in the fall, you've got the Democratic National Convention in downtown Chicago, basically what was called a police riot. Go to 1992, LA, LA riots. Well, I went back and looked at some of those videos. It was horrible. Just, just horrible. And so you try to put things in perspective that, you know, we've been through some of this before, we're gonna get through it again. Springfield's a wonderful, great, I wasn't born here, you know, I went to first grade in three different continents. And one of those continents, they spoke a different language. And I went into a different language school. So, you, you know, you learn, we don't know enough about each other. And you learn how to be different and you learn to overcome, you know, the situations we're all been through, every one of us. But Springfield's a great, a great city. You know, we're an integrated city like it wasn't 50 years ago. I came here 40 years ago. Every neighborhood I've lived in is a good, been a good neighborhood. Yeah, I mean, you can find the good and the bad everywhere. So I just want to compliment those that organized that march yesterday. I, I want to compliment all those who are working 24/7, you know, some like our police, trying to prepare for what, any scenario that can take place. You know, having served 30 years in the Army National Guard, infantry, you know, I know what it's like to be trained to affix bayonets. You know, I remember that. Chuck, you probably remember that too. You know, our, our, you, you try to train, 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 and you try to make sure that people are, you know, law enforcement, that they go back on their training. And then there's screw-ups and it just messes everything up because it tarnishes people that shouldn't be tarnished. But we gotta overcome, you know, you can't, we, we gotta overcome when there's problems, mistakes, and move forward. So, I'd like to compliment our SPD and our aldermen in all the different wards that communicate with our neighborhood associations. When you hear false rumors, you try to tamp it down, try to get out accurate information. And, and the social media, you know, puts out a lot of false information. And so, I'd like to compliment everyone that tried to work on that so that people don't get riled up for the wrong reasons, for false reasons. So, I just, again, Springfield's a great town and we got progress to make, but I'm proud to be an alderman and proud to be part of the city council. And Mayor, I know you put in some long hours, night after night. I watch your videos with the mass media, or the media at least, on Sunday night and late on Monday night. And our police chief, you participated in those video conferences for our media, trying to put out accurate information and, and doing so. And our clergy that tries to help folks, our businesses that didn't know what to expect and were trying to prepare for any scenario. We got a lot of folks here that were dealing with uncertain situations, not knowing what the outcome would be. And fortunately, as Alderman Turner and Alderman Gregory have said, you know, we, we, we got through this. And thanks for helping us get through this. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. And Chief Winslow asked him to come up, say a few words about, really definitely, he said it previously, is we need to improve, we must do better. And I think one of the questions was the setup with regards to parade route, things of that nature. Well, a couple of things. One is social media. You don't know it's fact or fiction, but you have to prepare for it just in case. And there's rumors flying that people are coming out from, through social media, coming into town, buses coming in and everything else. So, I know that drove some of the direction, but with regards to, I think the important thing is to remember that what we, made the clear distinction as much as possible, none of the vandalism taking place as far as that goes, broken windows, the things out of Dick's Sporting Goods was, you know, thanks to quick response, the police department averted. Public Works helped with that. But that was not associated with the protesters. So in a lot of other communities, you couldn't discern that, but that's what we set out to do, to make sure that there was a clear information, or as much as possible, that shows that the, I call them agitators, that might be happening, did not have anything to do with the peaceful protesters and what was the messaging there. So, and the Black Lives Matter movement. So Chief, I don't know what else you'd like to state, but--
No, I would just like to go a lot that's been said tonight, and that we're in our third 24-hour cycle, as far as everything that's going around the country. We're obviously monitoring that. We're working with our federal and state partners to gather as much intelligence as possible and to vet that intelligence. It takes a while. And when we talk about social media and we talk about people putting stuff out there, sometimes it's put out there out of concern, sometimes it's, it's their way of sharing stuff versus calling us with it. But when you put that out there, it gets spread and maybe it gets taken out of context. And then we have to take all that information and then vet it, track it down, and it takes time. What we've done with the Springfield Police Department, with our law enforcement partners, is put together an operations plan, a backup operations plan, and a backup operations plan. We have an operations plan that can be extended up to indefinitely if that's what this takes. But we have to be prepared for anything and everything that can come to us. And I've heard, I've had people ask me, you know, well, not a whole lot happened here. Why not? Is that because, what reasons? Well, it's a combination of things. It comes down to, one, our community and the people who live in our community, that we have a strong community. For all of our faults, we have a strong community. The second thing it comes down to is the organizers who have prepared some of these demonstrations. The third thing it comes down is law enforcement's pre-planning and our ability to put plans into place to prevent things from occurring. We know we averted several things and that comes from planning. That comes from resources. We are a community, a rich, a community-rich resource. I should say, we are a community that is rich with resources. And that goes back to our law enforcement partners. And it doesn't matter whether it's the state police, the federal agencies, the FBI, DEA, the Donahoe community, Saginaw County Sheriff's Office, Jerome, Leland Grove, Chatham, Sherman, Loamie. We had so many people who've been helping us over the last 48 hours or more as we prepare. Again, we have to have contingency plans. I hope that this operation goes off as the ways it's been going. I think it will, because of our community. I think it will. But we have to be prepared. I would rather have board officers out there getting paid to sit and do nothing other than monitor something versus having to go out there and see what we see what's going on around our country right now. So, with that said, we've had more than 20 incidents that have arisen over the last 48 hours of vandalism, graffiti, broken business windows, burglaries to commercial businesses, cars stolen, car windows broken out. But in light of everything else, that's pretty good. And then people are like, is it related to the protesters? I can tell you some of the graffiti's been related to protesters, not much of it. And I'm not gonna say it's the whole protests, it's people who break off from it and do their own thing. Because for, for the foremost part of it, these protests have been handled extremely well. The organizers have done a good job. And I know for a fact that people that are in the protest have also helped police the people that are there. So it's good. It's good. People get to go out, they get to hear, express themselves, express their constitutional rights. As I've said all along, our job on these protests is nothing more than public safety and maintain the peace. That's all it's about. I've been saying that for over a month now, and that's what it's about. And that's what we saw this week. With that, we still have resources that will be deployed throughout however long we need it. And we will continue that. We will continue to monitor things as we go throughout the next 24 hours, and then we'll reevaluate tomorrow for the next 24 hours. And that's how we do things in law enforcement. It's all about planning. There's been a lot of things said here tonight, and I debated whether I was gonna say anything. And first and foremost, I stand here as a Christian with the Lord, my Savior. But it hurts when I hear a lot of the stuff that's been spread through the media, spread by some of us sitting around here. I'm a sinner. Every one of us is a sinner. But with that said, we're not perfect, our community's not perfect, but we're damn good. And with that said, we have a damn good police department. I know we're not perfect. We handle issues when they come up and we deal with them. And what happened in Minnesota since last freaking Monday, things we don't put out in the media, we have met with our officers. We have sat down and watched the videos. We have sat down and talked with them. And it's still going on because we haven't got through everybody. We have put out training to ensure something like this doesn't happen here, because you know what? All my officers are mad too. You know why? Because this takes us back so far of all the stuff we have tried to do over the last freaking seven years of my being chief, and even before me, the other chiefs. We have a good department. We're not perfect. We make mistakes and we own up our damn mistakes. Excuse my language, I shouldn't have said that. But we own up to it. And we take our lumps and we move on. There's personnel matters that I cannot talk about in public. But as I told some of the media last night, I'm proud of our department. We are a leader in this state. The state of Illinois is a leader in the country when it comes to progressiveness, progressiveness and transparency. I fired three guys since I've been the chief of police and it ain't easy and it ain't fun and it's part of the job. And I'll do it again if I have to. If the, if the, if the case rises to that, that's what will happen. But my officers have rights as well. With that said, no one, and let me make this great and clear so everybody knows where the hell I stand on this. What happened in Minnesota was wrong. The officials there moved faster than anybody I have ever seen in my life to fire four people within 48 hours and then arrest somebody within 72 hours. They're doing the right things up there. Justice will be held there. I'm sure that gentleman's going to jail. And then the other three, I'm sure there'll be charges forthcoming. But we gotta give them an opportunity. And I pray it doesn't happen here. And that's why you train and you train and you train. And people ask, what, what do you do? Well, we train on de-escalation multiple times a year. We train on human rights, constitutional law, constitutional policing. We do things, but we still make mistakes because we're all sinners. And then we hold our people accountable. And that's what we will do here. And the actions of one officer, I don't know how many miles away, changed the rest of us in law enforcement across this nation. And that's the message that we deliver to our troops. Watch what you do out there. Be cognizant. Because one thing you do can ruin it for the rest of us. But it's gonna happen. We're gonna make mistakes because we're not perfect. We're not robots. We're not, and neither none of you. Additionally, what my officer said and typed on social media was 100% wrong. I called Alderman Gregory. I spoke to him. I spoke to Alderman Turner. And if you, on behalf of the men and women of the Springfield Police Department, I'll say it here, I'm deeply sorry for what my officer did. He messed up and I will hold him accountable. He messed up. He shouldn't have said what he said. And it will be dealt with, and I won't talk anymore about that personnel issue the rest of the time. Again, Alderman Gregory, I've known you for a long time. On behalf of the Springfield Police Department, and I hope you accept it, I'm sorry. Alderman Turner, I've known you for even longer time probably. And on behalf of the Springfield Police Department, I am sorry. We will move forward, we will get through this. And the day that we can't get through this is the day I'll step down. So with that, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. That's why I chose you as chief. You keep it real. So thank you very much. Any other comments on that? But Alderman Fulgenczi, and if you take your, unmute yourself. There you go.
There we go.
Thank you.
On a lighter note, away from some of this, I just wanna, are we into new business yet?
Yes.
I just want to say that Joe Davis is a friend of mine, and he's sponsoring a pizza giveaway for Saturday afternoon between 2:00 and 4:00. And we're giving away 107-inch pizzas to the first amount of people that come here. And it's usually between 2:00 and 4:00. So we're, we're giving away 100-- So we're, we're giving away 100 free pizzas that anybody wants to get. And Joe's thinking is that there's a lot of hungry people and he'd like to be a part of this solution.
Thanks, John. Is that former council coordinator Joe Davis?
No, no, no. This is Joe Davis from Davis Mechanical.
Oh, great. Thank you very much. Any other new business come before the council? We do have a Facebook Live, actually. Alderman McMinimum, I believe, is on tomorrow and Alderman Fulgenzi.
You still going forward with that, Mayor? You've had a busy week. I mean, you had a long week. Do you want to take a rest? You know, you want to take a nap or you know?
Yeah, I'd like to, but onward and upward. So any other new business? But Alderwoman DeSento.
I've had several questions. Are we under any sort of curfew? Or are you advising people to stay at home? I've had tons of questions about that.
Yeah, no, there's, it's, none of that is in place. Not, not like yesterday or Sunday. But we appreciate everybody's, you know, being cognizant of one another and that's what it's all about. So thank you very much. Any other new business? We do have several people signed up to speak. I don't have a last name. Sharina. I don't know if she zoomed in, I think. Sharina? I love Tom Chee's listening.
Mayor, she is. Yep, Mayor, she is joining at the moment. So I will allow her to turn her video on.
Great. And if you'd state your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it.
Sharina has joined.
Great. Hi, Sharina. If you could state your full name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sharina Douglas.
Hello. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Langfelder. Thank you, Tom, as well, for dialing in. And I appreciate all the alder, alderwomen this evening for, for just being vocal. And I wasn't going to say anything, but I am born and raised in Springfield. Something very few people would even be proud of. I, I have longed to love my city. I am going to be honest with you all. I often, as a, as a young, dreamed of greater and grandiose things just to get out and get away. Thought that meant leaving Springfield. The wider I get, I realize that it's no location or place. And it's really about community. And my community is right here. And I have to say today, I do love Springfield. And I share with, with everybody in being so proud of Springfield over this weekend and just how we as a community acted and did not participate in the fear mongering as far as making it actual, right? They participated on virtual, virtual platforms. But we as, we as community participants did not. And, and so I, I speak in today to, to just say that as proud of Springfield I am, I, I, there is much more work that we need to do. And I commend everybody up here just for taking the, the stance to be in front of everybody and be leaders and be the, the spokesperson's and, and the examples for your community. Because it's hard, right? You guys, the ones with the targets on your back, you're the face of everybody. And as a leader in some very micro organization in comparison to this, I want to call and commend you. I want to call because of your platform and demand that you all stand up and, and, and make sure that Springfield is the place that is the home of Lincoln. That's behind there on Langers Felder's screen. The home of Lincoln is going to mean that we have a lot more to do with tolerance when it comes to racism, when it comes to sexism, when it comes to gender and, and sexual orientation in this city. And, and it's, it's a, that we all stand up. And I also want to make it a point that it, to, in your position to stand silent, you are speaking louder than you know. And not stand on the side of what is right and what is just. You're showing who you are clearly. And, and so I, I do commend all of you places and for your honesty. And I, I, I know as a Springfieldian, I'm not going to stand by any longer. So you guys have a, a assistant, somebody on the ground working for you and in support of Springfield.
Well, thank you, Sharina. We appreciate you participating in your comments. Next person signed up is John Keating.
Hi, Mayor Langfelder. How are you doing today?
Good, thank you. Go ahead.
As, I'm familiar with some of the alderpeople that are there today. I've actually met you a few times in the past. And the reason I want to speak to you folks today, I'm out here right now at the Capitol, sitting on the steps with young people right now of our city who are out here because they believe that their presence is going to make an impact in how they're treated. And one of the issues that I've seen over the last few days through, through these protests is with our, the way that the police department has been responding. We are extremely appreciative of how they've responded to the marches themselves and how they have handled those and especially keeping their presence out of sight. Because as we all know, simply inserting a police force into some of those situations escalated. But we're also seeing Springfield police officers in full tactical gear driving around downtown on a golf cart. And if they're getting ready for, if they're just being prepared in case things go south, they don't have to be making their presence known. We feel that is entirely an intimidation tactic. When we walked behind the fire station the other day, the rear door was open. And there was an officer in an armored, on top, already inside, ready to roll out in an armored personnel carrier with a rifle pointed at us. That is unacceptable as a response to peaceful protests. I spoke to one of the officers in tactical gear last night on Facebook Live that was outside of the municipal center and was asking him about the, sorry, we got a horn going down here. I was asking him about the city trucks that are being used to block off the area around the municipal center. And he said the reasoning for that was to protect the protesters. But everything I've seen, they've used squads to do that, to block off roads as they're going by. And that becomes an issue of transparency. Because if they were to block off the protesters, there wouldn't also be a city dump truck sitting in front of the entrance to the jail. The city's doing that to protect their property. And they're trying, and the officers that are on duty are saying that to, they're doing it to protect us. And that type of lack of transparency is extremely harmful to the relations that we have as a community, especially with as volatile as the situations are out here today.
Well, I appreciate your comments. I know for, with regards to the trucks, I could speak to that personally. With regards to the social media comments being made, buses coming in, there are specific targets, I believe, that were mentioned. And so from that standpoint, you know, you have to, you can't be lax in that regards. And, you know, again, what people say is with regards to protesters, that's first and foremost, getting everybody the right to protest, making sure you're protected, you can voice your concerns. And then as importantly, with regards to any outsiders, that's what others have been saying across the country. It's people from the outside coming in. We want to make sure they do not come in and disrespect the city as that's happened in other places. So, you know, that's what I can mention with regards to that. But I appreciate you coming up and what you've done for organizing and moving forward in a positive manner.
I appreciate that. And I understand that there is always a threat of outside agitation. I've been involved in trying to keep peaceful, trying to keep people safe in a number of movements. I'm currently wearing the shirt that I got when I was down in Burgerton as a community organizer and working as a street medic because they weren't sending ambulances in because it wasn't safe for them. So we had to take care of the people that were being harmed by the tear gas and harmed by the rubber bullets ourselves. And I understand being prepared. But being prepared doesn't mean driving around downtown Springfield on a golf cart with a, with military-grade weapons. Being prepared doesn't mean already sitting in top of, in the top of an armored personnel carrier with a rifle pointed at peaceful protesters. Being prepared is sitting inside that garage and being ready to mobilize if and when something happens. Not, and what they're doing now is intimidation tactics. And that's only going to make relations worse and create a worse situation.
Well, I appreciate it. And just like everybody, you know, when you're, any action we all take, you know, and I, I hope this is what the lesson has learned, not only today, but as we move forward. It's important that, you know, as you as an organizer, you look back, what worked well, what didn't? And you make those positive changes, just like we'll do as a municipality. And that's what, so I appreciate it. So we'll continue to do that and move forward from there and appreciate your comments.
All right, I appreciate you giving me the floor. Mayor Langfelder, you have one to say?
Thank you. You too. Next is Stella Dean.
Stella dropped off.
Okay. Is there anybody else, Tom?
I have comments.
Yeah, there, I think there'll be a next, yeah, we, I told corporate council, we're not going to read comments. But we'll, I think next month, we'll be able to open to the public. Just so everybody realizes we're still under the 10 and under category. Hopefully with the metrics, the way they are, depends what it looks like in our region. We're asking that the governor, you know, Illinois Department of Public Health, as well as local public health, they look at our metrics and make a determination in the middle of June if we'd be able to open to phase four. But again, that's metrics driven. And I'm not sure how that assessment will transpire. But hopefully we'll move forward in a positive manner. And again, remind everybody, we are in the middle of a pandemic. As people in the audience are wearing their, we appreciate the media members wearing their masks or their face coverings. But it's important to do that if you're within six feet of somebody or in a public space supposed to wear your face covering to cover your nose and mouth. And it's just to protect others from yourself if you are asymptomatic. So we'll continue to move in that direction. But in July, for sure, we will, hopefully, if everything holds true that is today, we'd be able to open up, I think, to a number of 50 or if the capacity allows that for the social distancing here in the council chambers. So we'll have to make arrangements and we'll coordinate with the council members on. And you can think about this because this is going to be through the rest of this year. Do we need to put, you know, like we've done in our own departments, plastic glass in between workplaces that are close proximity? Should we do that between the automatic seats? Or you can think about how you think we should move forward in rearranging the horseshoe, dealing with the potential recurrence or resurgence of the pandemic. So that's something we have to be cognizant of as we move forwards.
Mayor, I have two other people that were signed up. Sam Nichols.
Yeah, Sam Nichols on. Tom, is anybody else on? Tom Chee?
I do not have Sam Nichols on.
And the other one was Coach Rena.
That was, that was Sharina and she, she made her statement.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just want to make sure we didn't miss anyone.
Thank you.
Is there Rachel Otwell signed up?
No, she's.
I don't, unless, I don't have that.
No. She's a reporter, I believe.
Okay, sorry.
All good.
Any other discussion or comments? Is there a motion for adjournment?
I'll move second.
They're moving second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Aye.
Say aye. We're adjourned. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Good night.